At this time, I'd like to call the regular session of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities to order. I'd like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded both video and audio. During the visitors comments section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address, and then will be given three minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raised hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the visitor comments section. In addition, there will be a public comment session after the general manager staff reports. During this section, the public may comment on this evening's presentations. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the visitors comments section. Those attending in person should sign up on the signup sheet located near the entry. Comments are limited to three minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions visitors to not disclose confidential account information or information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may email or call BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in this room will act respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations towards any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the board only. We will then determine staff's involvement. Attendees shall refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If side discussion is necessary, please take it outside the boardroom. If any of the rules above are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. My name is Tom Groneman. I'm second district and board president. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, general manager, David Haley, member at large, position two, and board vice president, Stevie Wake, senior, first district and board secretary, Brett Parker, third district, Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position one, Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, position number three, and Angela Lawson, acting chief counsel. Please remember to set your phones on silent. Please also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Angela, would you please take a roll for attendance?
Roll call. Groneman?
Here.
Haley?
Present.
Wakes?
Here.
Mulvaney Henry?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
You have a form.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda for this evening, are there any additions?
I move approval of the agenda.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, at this time, I would ask for approval of the minutes for the work session of September 18th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Wakes, who have approval? Parker, second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call. Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, before I ask for approval of the minutes of the regular session of September 18th, 2024, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
That motion carries.
At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, is there anyone signing up to speak tonight? Thank you. Rick, is there anyone online wishing to speak tonight? Thank you. So first on the agenda is August 2024 financials. I'll see what the board want to entertain with regards to approving that. It says you want to go through finance, you want to have consent agenda or I'm trying to remember what we decided last night.
No, I mean, I thought we decided one thing, and then I think some board members want to go through it, so I don't want to until we change the policy, I don't want to upset the apple cart any further.
Okay, then why don't we go ahead and?
Laurie, you want to come up? Randy, whoever?
Present the?
So we'll review the August 2024 financial statements. Looking at our build KWH, we're pretty consistent in where we were last year at this time, so we're down just a little bit, less than 1%. Residential's down 2%, commercial's down 2%, and then we're seeing our industrial up about 4%. Looking on the water side, same scenario, water's pretty consistent where we are last year of this time. We're seeing residential down slightly about 1%. Commercial up about 1%, and then our industrial is down about 3%. For the month of August, revenues overall, electrics up about 14% in comparison to our budget, while water's up 5%. Comparison to 2023, overall, we're about 5.6% above 2023 August. Compared to budget, electric is up about four and a half million, while water's up about 200,000, so a net of about 4.7 million or about 13%. For our revenues year-to-date, comparison to 2023, we're up about 1.2%. We are up in comparison to budget about 4.7%. That's about 11.7 million combined. Electric up 5% overall, while water's up 2%. We are seeing residential up over budget by about two and a half million, while commercial's up about 6.9 million. We're still seeing industrial down to budget by about 2 million. Schools are about 630,000 above, and then our wholesale is still below budget by about two and a half million. On the water side, residential is up slightly, about 40,000. Commercial is up overall about a million, while industrial is up slightly, about 41,000. And we did recognize, we fully have recognized our ERC over recovery from our third and fourth quarter of 2023. We finished that in June of this year. Looking at our expenses just for the month of August, in comparison to 2023, we are down expenses by about almost 20%. Compared to comparing budget, we are down about 17%. Electric's down about 3.7 million, water's down about a half a million, so a net of 4.1 million. Electric itself is down from percentage perspective, down 18%, while water is down 13%. Looking at our operating expenses year-to-date, we're down almost 8% below 2023 levels. We are down compared to our budget about 3.5%. Overall, it's about 3.1 million on the electric side, about 3.3 million on the water side, so net of about 6.4 million. Electric is down about 2% and water's down about 12%. Looking at operating expenses, less depreciation. So compared to budget, we're down about 5%, about 4.6% overall. Comparing budget, our purchased power is up about 8.2 million, while our fuel is down about 5.4 million. Production costs are down about 815,000, and our TND's down about 3 million, while our general administrative is down about two and a half million on the electric side. On the water side, it's about 785,000 down on production, while TND is down about 1.8 million, and our GNA is down on the water side about almost 700,000. So in August, our change in net position was a positive 15.7 million. We had projected to be about a positive 6.7 million. Electric's difference between budget and actual is about 8.3 million positive, while water's about 700,000, so overall about 9.1 million variance between our budget and From year-to-date, we're up about 20.7 overall. Our electric side is up about 14 and a half million over budget, while water's about 6.1 million. It's about 20.7 million altogether budget over actual. This is just looking at our 10-year trend, what our revenues are over expenses through August of year-to-date on the electric side. Next slide is looking at our 10-year trend, August year-to-date on the water side. The next slide looks at our average daily collections. So we are averaging in the month of August about 2.1 million. Our collections are August collections, so it's July build and June usage. So we're kind of in our peak of our summer period. That is in comparison, I mean, we're about 1.8 million in 2022, about one, almost 1.8 million in 2023. Next slide looks at where we were, our historical monthly cash comparison. So the month of August, we had a positive 10.3 million. So year-to-date in August, we're overall about a $4 million positive through the month of August. So the next few months, September and October, we're still probably anticipating that those will be positive as well before we get into our winter period. Looking at our cash position, we're able with that 10 million increase, we're able to increase our days' cash from 84 days in July to 103 days for August. And one day is still approximately about 600,000 to 625,000 a day. Our fuel inventory, right around where we were last year at this time, so about 7.6 million overall of our coal and gas we have on hand, and 7.1 last year at this time. This is just a historical graph of our days' cash on hand. So we've made some good progress, you know, in 2024 from where we were in 2021, 22, and even 23. On the capital spending side, we have a total capital budget of about 67 million. We still have about 64% of that left. Water, I'm sorry, electric has spent about 13 million to date. Water has spent about 8 million. And common, which is typically our IT, is about 2.7 million. So we spent about 24 million to date of the 67 million. Some of the major projects there listed, just to look at our annual overhead and underground, we spent about 1.3 million. Our meter program, we're having to replace our meters as we're over the 10-year period of our AMI system, so about 823,000. We're still working on our distribution pole inspection, which is about an eight- or nine-year project. We spent about 1.4 million. And we received our overhead and underground transformers that we had on order for a lengthy period of time, so it's about a million and a half. 98th Street, we spent about 700,000. And then on the water side, distribution and some of the replacement of mains and pipes is about 4.1 million. Production's about 340,000, while water services replacements about 470,000. Looking at our debt coverage, top part is looking at our debt coverage with pilot. So we're at a combined rate of 3.04x, 2.91x on the electric side and 2.99 on the water side. Looking at our debt coverage without pilot, we're at a combined rate of 2.32, with 2.19 on electric and 2.38. Our financial target without pilot is 1.6x. I'll ask if you have any questions. Not? I'll ask for approval.
Move to approve.
Wait, second?
August 2020.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
That motion carries.
All right, next on our agenda is the continuation of our 2025 budget presentation, and we're into the next topic of revenue forecast. I guess you're going to go through this with us?
Yes, got a presentation for you. I'll try to beat it up so y'all can get to other things. This is very similar to the presentation we've, I've presented in the past. This is a precursor to getting the revenue numbers into our budget so everybody can budget against the expenses on the expense side. This is the revenue side. So I'm going to give you a little bit of, there's some statistics in here, some FYIs, a little bit of how it works, and kind of going through kind of description, our process, and how we get to the numbers we get to. This first slide is just a high overview of what components go into the rates on the electric side and the water side. There's a base charge, an ERC, which is our fuel and purchased power, and an environmental surcharge, and the pilot and cell stack. So the four main components on the electric side. On the water side, very similar, there's a customer charge, a commodity charge. Commercial and industrial accounts have fire protection lines, meters, and pilot and cell stacks. You know, basically, my overview for this is, on the base charge, it makes up about half the bill on the electric side for a residential customer. About a third of the bill is your ERC, and about 10% of the bill is the surcharge. Next slide. So looking at the, specifically on the ERC side of the formula and how we get to the assumption for next year, the ERC includes all of our fuel and purchased power costs. There's also a $6 million annual reserve that we funded. Our funding in addition to that, that was approved in the last rate hearing, that helps smooth out any volatility in the market, allows us to have the cash on hand so that we don't have to increase rates a lot if there's, the situation comes about, or we can also back off on that if we need to, if the opposite happens. They, next year, we're assuming 4.3 cents on the ERC. That includes the 1.5 million per quarter or 6 million annually on the reserve. Andrew and I worked together to kind of come up with this forecast. I also put the average for the past eight quarters, it's been 4.4, so it's been about, we're going to be a little bit lower than that is what we're anticipating, hopefully some, but you never know. I mean, there's things that come up along the way. Just FYI, gave you a little table there to see where we've been and where we're at. Next slide. So on the environmental surcharge, that third box on that first graph, this recovers our debt service to fund capital projects, to put environmental mandates that come along from the state, federal entities, and we borrowed money to make upgrades to Quandale, and we've made a, borrowed money to put environmental controls on Nierman. That all happened in about 2015, and this is the debt service to pay for those bonds, repay those bonds. So next year in 2025, we have 17.5 million that we have to pay back, which gets recovered through the ERC. And then there's a multiplier on that of 1.3, which is for the times coverage or coverage ratio. So it's flat from where it was this year. I'm doing this process a little bit earlier, and I do have historically done it, so it may go up or down based on over or under recovery that I'll get to later in November and December. So that number could move a little bit, but I don't anticipate much movement on that. This will pretty much be steady until 2029, and then it will, that'll be the peak, and then it'll kind of meander on down to like 2035, so. Next slide. So just looking at the rate codes on the electric side, we bill your electric accounts based on a rate code, a 100, 200, 300, 250, 300, but what you see in your financials is residential, commercial, and industrial. So for instance, there could be, all 100s are residential, 200s, a mix of that could be some commercial, some industrial. So I have to do some allocating of those billing codes back to get to the budget, which is residential, commercial, and industrial. So I'll kind of go a little bit through that, but not going to get too far in the weeds with that. But what I want you to see in this graph is really the impact of the ERC and what rate codes, who it impacts the most. So when you look at the residential account, it's about 25% of the bill, and when you look at your, a large industrial account, it's about 40% of the bill. So they are more sensitive to that ERC number and that change than the residential is. So that's why we're kind of sensitive to need that 6 million that reserve to kind of smooth some of the volatility that may occur in that rate component over time. Next slide. So just looking at some of the components that we look at when we come up with the forecast on the electric side, we look at the ERC and the ESC, which we just touched on. We'll look at the revenue per customer. So I'll look at all the components, the customer charge, the kilowatt hour charge, all those things, and I'll look at what they generate on a customer basis. So divided by the number of customers to come up with an amount. So we'll kind of reverse engineer that math to come up with a revenue number. We'll look at the average usage per customer, we'll look at monthly loads, you know, the month, the load in January is different than the load in July. So we take all those into account, we look at each month individually, we'll get the number of customers and the historical KWH, and the demands that each one of those rate classes generate. Next slide. So we mash that all together, we come up with a total for the whole system, and for 25 or a little lower, a little like, I guess it's 2 billion KWH compared to, and just some historical as to where we, 24 is an estimate, we're not sure where we're going to be in 24, but 23 is an actual, 22 and so forth. So we're down, or projecting down a little bit from where we projected this year and where we ended up in 23. Next slide, and I'll get in a little bit why. This is just looking at the number of customers and the number of bills historically, and what our estimate is for the average for 2025 for each class. Residential there for 62, we had slight growth. Large, commercial, in those areas are pretty flat for the most part. There's a little growth in some areas, but it's not a lot to move the needle. Next slide. So this is just a visual for you to look at and understand a little bit of the components and how a residential bill gets generated. We used 808 average annual KWH, and I just got that number yesterday, or last week, Friday, I guess I should say, and I'll show you the next slide a little bit of how we came to that. But the components and how it's calculated, the customer charge, an energy charge, which is for the commodity, the ERC charge, the ESC, calculate it out, calculate the pilot, and so when you break that all out, what percentage of the bill's base rate, 57% of the residential bill's base rate, almost 25% or 24% is the ERC, which funds the fuel and purchased power, 6% is the environmental surcharge, and about 12% of the bill's pilot taxes. So this is how we generated the 808 average. I took a 10-year average on each one of the months. Month one is January, month two is February, month two is March, so we average each one of those months for the last 10 years for each one of those months separately. And that's the result, and when we average, the average is of the 12, you get 808. So this is just a general look at the components that go into one of the rate classes and how we get there. This is for residential, we got a customer charge, we got the consumption average, consumption charge, consumption that's used, the base charge, where the average base charge is 10 cents with the cut, the commodity charge and the monthly customer charge. We are assuming 300 new customers, and we look at what we assume is going to happen with all those customers, and those averages, we come up with about 604 million KWH for the year. We multiply that out in the rates, and we come up to nearly 59.6 million dollars. I'm not going to go through every rate class like that, that was just a general, just so you can see how, what we look at. This is just more of the slope or the shape of the curve of each one of those months that make up that 808. And as you can see, really what I'm kind of showing here is the steepness of the May to August. There's a steepness here, and when we get to commercial and industrial, you'll notice it's much flatter. So that's kind of the way, why residential pays more in their rates than a commercial rate does because of that steepness in that curve. So this is a scatter graph of all the residential for the last 10 years, and the red line indicates our assumption for 2025. So we take the actuals, we make some guesstimates of what our revenues per customers are going to be, and we kind of back our way into it, and these are where the numbers fall out. So we look at it, and we think, well, does that, does that look right? Does that make sense? I mean, we have some new growth there, we have some new apartment complexes, so we're kind of at the top edge of that curve. So, you know, it's reasonable, and when Andrew and I look at it, so, so those are the numbers that we use as we move along. So we'll go through commercial, oh, go ahead. So just to see how that looks on a bar graph, it's a little bit on the higher edge, like we just determined, mentioned, we're 604 million megawatt, 604,000 megawatt hours, right, Andrew? Yeah, I go from megawatts to kilowatts here, so I gotta watch myself. Next slide. Same scatter, but notice how much wider this is than the residential. It's a commercial graph, and like I said, got 10 years on each, each month going across, and this is where we land, so we generate our rates based on that line. Next slide, similar graph, and how it looks historically. Next slide. Industrial, now we're at the bottom. We have some changes going on in this class for next year. Industrial, now we're at the bottom. We we did, we have some changes going on in this class for next year. Um, GM's gonna be offline. But the, the interesting thing is this is load, this is kilo or megawatts. The interesting thing is we have ratchets in our rates and the rates are designed based on a look back. So there's summer, a lot of their demand charges will be based on their summer of this year for next year. So that won't reset really until next year. So there is some hedge in the rates that kind of protect us a little bit in having too much. Now, there will be a a loss in kilowatt hours. That's kilowatts that I was referring to on the demand side, but um, so we'll probably see that late next year and maybe into twenty six, some impact. But if they do ramp up, then those demand charges all kind of get reset. So but, you know, likewise, in this graph, I want you to take note of the flatness of this compared to the the residential graph. They're more flatter, you know. Sometimes it can get them a little bit more, can move the needle a lot if one, one particular customer changes their load pattern, it can, it can impact this graph quite a bit. So just, just, you know, just to take note of that. Next slide. Very similar to the last two. It just shows that we're a little bit on the bottom side. Um, you know, and I, like I mentioned earlier, I've done the, I'm doing this a little bit earlier than I have before. Um, I made, this may be adjusted a little bit based on what September's number comes in that. We haven't got those numbers yet and maybe even October's number. So, you know, this could tweak down a little bit more, but you know, I'm not anticipating a lot. Next slide. And finally, we're looking at our schools here. We're in the upper tier. We have had some new schools, it's a new square footages, additions and so forth in the service territory. So, you know, w- we're drawing the line there and and we're building our rates based on that usage. One thing I do want to note about schools is they kind of peak in the winter time and not the summertime. So they're usually, buildings are empty, so they're kind of the flip of the other commercials. So um, it's just a unique, unique thing to consider. Next slide, next slide. And when we add it all up in our major categories, we're going to be at two hundred and sixty one million and last year we were at two hundred and sixty two point three. So the revenue is gonna be down slightly a main, main two uh, from where we at last year on the electric side. Now, this is just the major categories. We also have our um, pole attachments and all those miscellaneous revenues that that are generally very stable that'll, will add to this as we go along. Next slide is is just touching on the water. Um, similar processes we use in the wa- as we look at electric, but water is much more stable. Uh, you know, the consumption in January is very similar to the consumption in July i- in a lot of cases, unlike the water in your yard or something like that. So and we don't have a tunnel that in our service territory. So the consumption patterns are very consistent across all months. You know, we have a, a rating key, price, rate increase to consider that came in effect this year. But six months of that was just for this of six months of twenty four. And then that other will will hit in the six months of the first six, that's not accounted for yet in the current rates that we have on our books. So and we're assuming about three million total for twenty five for the whole year um, in in twenty five. We look at the number of customers, similar. Um, we have a reduction in wholesale. Bonner Springs is um planning to open their plant and suburban waters taking less water has historically been taking less water because they are now operating their own plant um, near DeSoto. We have the same rate design as we've always had. It's a declining block, three blocks. Uh, the more water you use, the tur- the cheaper the rate is. And generally speaking, the, the number of customers is very stable. Uh, next slide. This just looks at the consumption, the the water and gallons and gives you an idea of, you know, we're we're seeing that small trend of downward on the industrial, which is the blue line and the bottom line, which is wholesale. And the industrial is related to probably GM and and some of our other facilities related to that. The other categories are pretty stable. You do see some um, little dip in twenty twenty or increase, see a different, see that dip in twenty twenty, the commercial going down, but a lot of people staying home, so it kind of rose up in in the residential side. So just interesting facts. Next slide. Looking at the number, number of customers uh, overall for the whole, whole system, industrial, we see some eh, a growth in residential a little bit, similar to what we saw on the electric side. Overall, this, we're assuming four hundred and two new customers for the year on the water side. Next slide. And when we add it all up, we see forty nine point one last year and fifty point seven this year. And that is it. And I'll take any questions you have, comments. Anything else you want to see? Yes.
So, thank you. This is really a real, very, very interesting. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Dotty. To um, getting back to the electrical side, you you anticipate that next year we'll, we'll have a decrease in revenue. Is that all attributed to the one particular layoff? It looked like it's gonna be, I think you said a million um, anticipated.
Anticipating going up, but not as much as they would have went up if that customer was in play.
Um, so the slide seemed to indicate it was less for twenty twenty five than
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, and then it was, I think it was maybe, it was the last slide of electric.
No, you're, you're right. You're right. Yeah, that's the the Yeah, go on up. Down two. Right there.
Uh, I think it was more like a chart. Uh, oh, yeah, a twenty five. I thought it was one less. That's, that may be it. That may be it. You have the total. Yes, yes, that's it. That's so not quite a million. Not quite a million.
Yeah, right.
Or a a million less, though.
Yeah, it would be almost what whatever. One point, one point three.
Okay.
One point two.
Yeah. And that's attributed to
Well, if you look at the industrial area, you can see how the industrial area, three, four lines above it. It drops from fifty three one to forty nine point four. Now you see the other is above it, residential is increasing. And commercials also slightly flat. So a lot of that, you know, the impact of GM there
Right.
is is more than that many. It's more like probably three something there.
That's what I, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. And um so I have um, a provocative, a very active member in and around consumer protection. Who's always discussing with me the impact to um, our residential consumers that we could have. Um, and I always share with this uh advocate uh, that if I really wanted to make an impact in what the bulk of our uh consumers or constituents are concerned about it, there was a reduction. And I don't know if it's one class, but a reduction in kilowatt charge, if we were to be able to reduce it to, as they allege, cut it by as much as one half. First of all, is that possible? Um, uh, secondly, and not to do it right on the cuff, what sort of an impact would that have if our residential kilowatt surcharge were halved?
The customer charge.
The customer charge, the residential electric uh, charge
So
will have
Roughly?
Oh, first of all, can it be done? Um, can it be done? Or do we have to?
There's an impact to that. If you did do it, you'd have to spend less money and have a rate hearing to do that, right?
Yeah.
So there's
So Randy, let's, let's be sure we understand what customer charge means. So is that is that the uh, the base rate itself, the the energy usage, the customer charge? That's, that's the component of the bill or or what exactly? I just want to be sure.
The fixed customer charge that's
That's residential.
It's residential, right. It's twenty six dollars uh, currently. So if you cut it in half, there's sixty thousand customers a month, just roughly, I'm just rough mathing this. You could take half that, half of twenty six is thirteen. Thirteen times sixty five thousand.
Well, no, residential only.
Well, okay, sixty.
Yeah.
Sixty, thirteen times sixty, that gives you a number and then multiply that by twelve for each month. That would give you a rough number of what that impact would look like. Nine point four million.
Hmm. That's not a large not necessarily to our bottom line. Okay. But think of what it would mean to uh, the residential customer. Anyway, all right. And it, but it is able to, that is something to bifurcate it. Uh, that was the one thing, the question I had, that we can do that. I mean, there's no even application that, you know, our commercial or our industrial uh, might say if in fact that were a decision that could be made, could that be done?
So in answering that, if I can just get him, if you want an answer, Randy, I got a follow up.
No, go ahead. No, you're
Okay, so let's talk about the history of why and how uh, and what a cost of service study and rate allocation actually means, okay? And and count, and count of where we were and how we've gotten to where we are today. So if you can help with some history there.
Um, yeah, so he- he's, you know, we follow trends that are in the, in the marketplace that other utilities are doing. Historically, utilities have made their money on the variable part of the bill, the KWH, how mu- however much juice is going through your, your meter. But the majority of the costs and the utility, the the structure of it is fairly fixed. We could say, Andrew and I have balanced this off many times, about eighty percent of the costs are fixed in the utility. You know, your salaries, all the other things that go into your equipment and all those things. So to generate such a small part of your bill from the variable charge leaves you exposed to when things, you know, when you know, it doesn't align your, your revenue with your costs, so to say. It it leaves you, so when customers, when the, when the, when the demands start to decrease, you still have your costs there to cover. So it puts your cost at risk a little bit to cover those. So historically, the, the the industry has been moving to more fixed costs, increasing the fixed costs, lowering the 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 KWH charges. So that's where we have kind of been going. We, we were at eighteen when I first got here fifteen years ago. And we've increased it eight dollars to twenty six over that time. So, and you, we see a lot of other utilities, you know, we listen to our rate consultants. Um, I know several in Nebraska are in the thirties, thirty dollars um, on their fixed charges. Uh, and but what happens is they lower their KWH charges as the fixed charges are going up. So, you know, there could be a net neutral, zero impact to the customer in some of those situations.
So the only thing I'll add to that too is we've spent years trying to get all of these different customer groups back to their true cost of service. Okay, as opposed to, we're gonna shift some residential costs or lower some residential costs. That means now we're shifting it to some other customer class and now we're asking them to to pick up the cost for this customer group. So uh, and BPU used to be there, but we've, we've kind of adjusted and tried to get all of our customers uh, realigned based on what their cost of service is. So residential have certain component of cost that it takes us to provide service to that residential group. Commercial is, is, has its own cost structure and 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 uh and industrial and schools and others have it. So I think we're closer to a true cost of service model uh, today. And I'm looking at you guys, tell me if I'm wrong, then where, then where we've been. But I would also say that uh looking out into the future, there's gonna be other rate discussions we're gonna have to have and other rate designs and concepts is gonna have to probably be, be put in play. But but today, we're, we are charging people as close to what their cost, actual cost of service is than what I can ever remember at this utility.
Okay, thank you. Finally, remind me, our kilowatt per hour uh, is a work, our, our, our base charge?
Well, it's it's, if you include the customer's charge, it's about ten cents.
About ten cents.
Before your ERC and your ESC.
Yeah, I see.
So if you all in, if you threw pilot in there, it's probably around fifteen, sixteen cents.
That's fifteen, sixteen cents. And how comparable is that in the metropolitan services or has that analysis been done?
I, I don't have that off the top of my head, but the last time I looked, that's when I looked at the EIA reports and the statistics that they provide and put out. It's all online. It's comparable with, with what the others in the area are doing and also what the areas in the, the Midwest look like.
We're right there.
Right, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, I can get that to you. I can give it to the bill and bill, give it to you.
I really appreciate this discussion, appreciate the analysis again. I would wait till board comments to thank you, but while you're there, let me thank you very much for uh, for this thorough presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Randy. This is the first time I, I've uh, heard since I've been on the board, uh, discussion of the ERC and the, and the uh, E- ESC. Uh, because uh, many times when customers look at their bill, they wanna know everything. They, they wanna know, what is this on my bill?
Right.
And uh, so I'm glad to, to
You can take that and you can use that as your guide.
Most definitely. And and I, I appreciate that, appreciate also the explanation of it. Because uh, a lot of times, you know, I can't tell them, well, I don't know what that is, you know, uh, and I would, and I appreciate you explaining it because uh, many times they don't understand what the market does and what, you know, that. So I really appreciate you sharing that. Thank you, Randy. I appreciate it. Okay, uh, no other questions? We'll go ahead and move on. Uh, miscellaneous comments. I do have have a few. Uh so coming out of the uh, work session, uh, Tom and Rose, I would I would uh talk offline if you, if you're, if you guys are okay with that on, on uh, how many more top, how, how, how much more conversation is gonna be needed on the customer service policy? And do we need to how do we go about setting aside appropriate time to get through all of that? So and if you wanna answer that, okay.
Oh, did you not want us to answer? Did you want us to talk offline?
I, I, no, I so, I mean, I, I guess I would phrase it this way. You know, same conversation we had before, do we have to set aside a, a wider span of time outside of the regular board meetings or during the board meetings or, or just what? I'm just, I'm looking for
Well, I, I think the unfortunate thing, and it's not unfortunate, it's just we are where we are in the process. The only thing remaining to, to be discussed are pretty big ticket items, right? That, I mean, I think we've gotten through the rest. Some of the red lines that are in this last document were simply just missed
Right.
um, in the previous version and they are, they are, they should not be controversial.
Okay.
Um, so I think I've, I think I've identified four
Okay.
items that are big ticket items. But obviously, um, the one we discussed is one, but there's a parallel to it as well. So I don't know if that's one big item or two.
Okay. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I'll just
Oh, I'm fine.
Think about, as I talk with Tom about future scheduling, you know, with this unfinished business in mind, you know, is, do we need to set aside a little bit more time to get through it or or do you think it's possible to get through it with the current board schedule that we're on?
I think that probably that the issues that Rose has identified or that she has that we probably ought to meet as a committee again and have the committee go through those three or four issues, hammer them out and then make that presentation to the full board and then be done with it. Put it to bed.
Well, and I would dare to say if schedule permits, the schedules permit for uh, the rest of the committee, perhaps we roll something into October ninth, as we'll be on site anyway. But we can talk about that offline.
Said October ninth, okay.
Well, I'm.
No, she said we'll talk about it.
Okay, 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 I'll.
I did, but presumably we're all going to be on site on October ninth.
Okay, all right, we'll talk offline.
I'm just hoping at the end of this that if I get laid off or anything, that customer service might have an opening for me.
Okay, uh, so the next meeting, board meeting, October sixteenth. We have IR, IRP uh, meeting again, hopefully to wrap up before we first meeting November, we'll be coming back to the board asking for adoption of that IRP uh, uh, plan. And also Lori, I think the next meeting would be also uh, our capital project plans too. So I'll put that out there to try to see if there's room to fit in. I guess I should have said that first before I, before I got to the customer service, but you know, keep that in mind that we're going to have a pretty busy next board meeting as well. So, you know, if, if we can find time to get through the other. And then in your packet, uh, let's see, you've got the Y Light Economic Development Council Fall Quarterly Meeting. So if you, if, if the board wants to go, if you can let Chris know. So we can uh, notice that up, I guess, if, if, if all the board wants to go together or a majority of the board. So let Chris know.
And at the same time, we meet about with GM, isn't that the same day?
Same day.
Yeah, okay, all right.
The, the why, why not EDC?
Six thirty, what time?
Sorry.
Ten to, ten to eleven thirty AM. You're welcome.
All right.
Do you need anything else on your schedule? Do you mean to repeat anything else that's on your schedule?
All right.
Thank you.
Now I'm reminded with the night deals, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. And then finally, uh, Amber, if you could step up to the mic, please. We'd like to introduce you to our new Director of Communications and Marketing. I'll have her introduce herself, give her a little bit of, of a, tell her, tell us about, we know.
All about me.
About you.
I'm happy to. Well, good evening. It's nice to see everybody, President, Board. I'm Amber Otting, Director of Marketing and Communications with Kansas City VPU, and it is really great to be home. We took a five-year stint down in Texas. Uh, my husband works in tourism and was a, a recruited there to run their tourism organization. So I went along with them. I do have a history in utilities and a history in energy. I'm fifth generation energy producer. So I like to say it's in my blood, but the truth is I've learned a lot from people that are in this room over time. Uh, during my time in Corpus Christi, I worked for Water Utilities as their Strategic Communications Director. I also have a history with Kansas Gas Service where I worked in stakeholder relations and government affairs for them. I found this opportunity and my husband found an opportunity in Kansas City and we knew we wanted to come home. So this is just perfect for me. Um, I couldn't be more happy to be here. I feel so at home in a utility uh, and telling the story. And I think there is so much opportunity to extend our message. One of my specialties is taking very technical, regulated information and making it digestible to our customers. So I'm really looking forward to the opportunities to tell more about who we are as a utility and as a community member and our environmental stewardship. And I just really look forward to working with all of you as well. It's a pleasure to be here. And with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Yes.
Uh, and welcome, Amber. I don't know if, if you're the one uh, who had the hand in developing the talking points around the EPA rules.
Yes.
But those are fantastic.
Excellent.
So um, you've already proven that you're able to take really technical information to people who don't understand things. And so thank you very much. You do a great job.
Excellent. I'm glad. That's good to hear. That's great feedback.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And welcome aboard again. Mr. President, that wrapped, whoops, uh, for all that are here, uh, just in person or in online, are there any public comments you want to make about tonight's agenda, any topics we've covered? Okay. If you can, uh, is, is that person unmuted? Okay. Scott, if you can state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. It's um, you, looks like you're still muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, on uh, your charts, um, I thought on your pilot fee, the pilot fees on your charts, shouldn't they be off now? Uh, since October first, they uh, are supposed to be off. Is that true?
God, our uh, the, the conversation we're having publicly is BPU is still having conversations with the Unified Government about the pilot fee. So we have one or I'm at that conclusion yet as to, as to when anything would change related to the pilot being on the bill.
So it's not going to change?
Uh, we are continuing to have any conversations with the Unified Government about the pilot charge.
Okay, uh, my other question is, uh, does BPU, do they sell the power that they don't use?
Yeah, you want to come up?
Yes, good question. So the way the market works or Southwest Power Pool works and all of us utilities in the electric industry are part of the Southwest Power Pool. And so essentially we all generate uh, energy based on uh, the requirements of SPP. And so all of the energy produced is sold to the market and all of the load that we need for our consumers is purchased from the market. So yes, there's, there's sales directly to the market and purchases from the market and us and all other utilities serve it the exact same way.
So is that power at a cut rate when you sell it?
It, it's at the exact same price that we buy it for at that instantaneous moment. So there's no difference between what we sell it for and what we buy it for. So everything essentially that's generated by any of us is sold at the exact same price as any other utility and it's purchased back at that exact same price.
Okay, do you have uh, more income than you have expenses on buying other utilities' power?
So, so essentially every minute of the day has a different value proposition for what that power is worth. And so therefore, generally, so the way it works is they don't turn your generator on until the value of the power is sufficient to pay for the cost to generate that power.
Thirty seconds.
And so the way it works is just that we would never generate power at a price that's below our offer curve. So the cost that it takes to generate that power.
So what's the percentage on uh, your time running the generator and buying power cheaper than what you can make it?
So we have a whole bunch of different units. We have whole units, we have gas units, we have fuel oil units, we have wind, uh, hydro, all of those resources. And so each of them have different run times. Uh, so generally the lower priced units will run more and the higher priced units will run less.
Okay, thank you for your answers.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone else uh, either present or online that wants to speak? Okay. All right, Mr. President, hearing none, I will turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay, for board comments, Rose.
Uh, um, thank you for the presentations tonight. I don't think anybody wants to hear from me anymore, Mr. President.
Um, welcome, Amber, and um, thanks for the forecast. Getting ready for the budget. So first step with um, also, thanks to the um, people in the work session with the with the information that gets us started. So I know, I know what that means at this point.
Echo everything Mary just said and let's go Royals.
Yay.
Royals won, didn't they?
They won.
Ditto.
Senator?
Unanimous. No comment. Thank you for the presentation, so.
No comment. I would, uh, other than welcoming Amber and thanking the staff for their, all their input this evening. I have uh, no comments of, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Okay, uh, it's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Grandaman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Well, Vanny Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
We're adjourned.